Good afternoon, welcome to the April first City Council Work Session, City of Nacogdoches. Blaine, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Yes. Father, we want to thank you for waking us up this morning. Thank you for starting us on our way. Lord, we thank you for everything that you've done for us, Lord, and everything we know that you're gonna do for us. Lord, we just pray that you look down upon this world that's full of trouble. Look down upon our country that's full of trouble. Look down upon our neighborhoods that's full of trouble. Lord, we need you now, we need you more now than ever before. We ask that you come quickly. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. If you'll stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Nothing in open form?
Nothing in open form.
Nothing in open form tonight, so we'll go right into the work session. Items included under work session are intended to provide opportunities for city council to study and discuss various issues and gather and analyze information. Council will not take formal action on matters presented at a work session, but may direct staff to place items relating to the matter on future agendas for formal consideration. Item A, consider possible revisions to the city's noise ordinance, including the addition of sound equipment permit requirement.
Mr. Baker.
Mr. Baker, members of the council, Jerry Baker, city attorney. Thank you for agreeing to this work session today to discuss potential revisions to our noise ordinances. And as you may notice, in the description or the title to in the agenda, I use the plural because if you didn't, weren't aware, our current regulations, there are actually two in our ordinances. One under chapter thirty-four, which was more of our nuisance type ordinances, are found under Article five, titled Noise and Vibrations. And there is one section that's found under chapter one eighteen, under Article seven, under Performance Standards, and that's actual, section one eighteen, five oh four. And that's part of the reason why we're here today, to discuss whether we need to potentially revise that, those regulations. And what you have before you are, is a proposed amendment, or amendments to those ordinances. Just to summarize, what these amendments would do is to consolidate the noise ordinance under chapter thirty-four. That's kind of the big change. So we'd remove section eighteen, five oh four altogether from chapter one eighteen and move those sections under a new section, section thirty-four, one five eight, and add a new section thirty-four, one five nine, to chapter thirty-four. And I'll break those down in just a little bit when we get to it. But that's essentially the big change that is being proposed by these amendments. And there will be other, more minor revisions in chapter thirty-four to make reference to these new sections, okay? So you can see those kind of outlined, and I hope you have the red line in front of you. You should have a red line for chapter thirty-four and a red line for one eighteen. And to make quite easy, one eighteen is completely redlined, so.
Throw it in the trash. Just throw it in the trash.
If the council still approves, once we get to that point, then that's what we would do. So, as I mentioned, one of the new sections, as you can see in your redline version of chapter thirty-four, is the addition of section thirty-four, one five eight. And what this would do is incorporate that, those provisions that are currently in section one eighteen, five oh four into chapter thirty-four. In that, to kind of summarize those additions to that, that new section, it would retain the decibel levels that are currently stated in one eighteen, five oh four for nighttime and daytime noise levels for residential properties. It would add a decibel level for non-residential areas, which is not currently in section one eighteen, five oh four. It would add requirements for a measuring decibel level device or sound meter, and then measurement being taken at the property line, the sound meter being approved by the American National Standards Institute, and the use, requirements of a useful windscreen to ensure that accurate readings are taken. It would also remove the octave band standards that are currently in the chart of one eighteen, five oh four. I don't know if you've looked at that chart. I'm not a sound engineer, so this is Latin to me. I try, I don't think many people in the city knows what this entails, what's required here. I assume there's some measuring device that would, could read that and make those measurements. But as I performed research on various city ordinances throughout the state, I failed to find another city. Now, I didn't look at every city, so I take that with a grain of salt. But the cities that I did look at, none of them had the octave band standard chart that we currently have in one eighteen, five oh four. So the idea was just to remove that and rely on the decibel level measurements that are in most of the ordinances, other city ordinances that I looked at. And other additions or amendments would be to update the time periods for nighttime and daytime to be consistent with the other sections. So if you look at the time periods that are currently stated in one eighteen, five oh four, they are from seven PM to seven AM. But if you look at the time periods that are stated in chapter thirty-four, particularly I would refer you to section thirty-four, one fifty-two, under violations, you'll see there's several different categories. If you look down to category number seven, which is pile drivers and hammers, category number eight, which is leaf or grass blowers, and category number ten, which is construction or repairing of buildings, each of those use a time period of nine PM to six AM. And so to be consistent with the time periods that are already in chapter thirty-four, the amendment would change those time periods from one eighteen, five oh four to the nine PM to nine AM. Does that make sense? Okay. And finally.
Did you say nine PM to nine AM?
Six AM, sorry.
Oh, okay. Because that's why it says zero six.
Yes. Nine PM to six AM. So, and that is stated under the new section thirty-four dash one fifty-eight C. You can see that there. And finally, it provides an alternative to the measurement of a sound level meter. Quote, "If the sound is plainly audible within a building or structure located thirty feet or more from where the sound is being generated." So there may be occasions where our NPD is not able to access a sound meter level. They have a noise complaint, they need to respond to it immediately, maybe they're out, they're already there at that address or nearby, and they don't have time to go back to get one if they don't have one. And they can use that alternative measurement to make an assessment of whether or not a violation has occurred, okay? And this, and just to let you know, kind of generally, before I go further, you know, the amendments to this, and the language used here in this amendment was discussed over several meetings for several, over months, going back to actually last, in the last year, meeting with Assistant Chief Kennedy, Mike New, and then as recently as last week, I had a meeting with Chiefs Weems, Kennedy, and Terravella, just to kind of go over this language and see what their thought process was on the proposed language, what ideas they have, and kind of pinging that back and forth, made the final changes that are before you today, okay? In addition to that, as I mentioned earlier, looked at several other examples of noise ordinances throughout the state of Texas. As I mentioned, I didn't look at all of them, that would be undoable. But some of the ones that we looked at included bigger cities like Houston, San Antonio, Dallas, Austin, who have dealt with a lot of issues based on, you know, Austin in particular, because there's a lot of case law that comes out of those cities. And so just kind of seeing where they were and how those were being challenged and how the courts interpreted their ordinances was very helpful. But also some smaller towns like Manville and Lufkin, looked at some of those, just to give an idea of what, you know, especially Lufkin being nearby, kind of how they are addressing these. And as, you know, as you're dealing with any kind of sound or noise, or, you know, and we'll get to the, the sound equipment here in a minute, but anytime you're dealing with something like that, First Amendment is always an issue that may come up. So a lot of case law was reviewed to try to, you know, stave off any potential challenges that may come forward. And, and so just generally speaking, that's kind of been the process these past months as we've been looking at this as a staff. Okay, so as I mentioned, I'm not a sound engineer, so there's some, there's some numbers that are currently in our ordinances and been carried over that, you know, really mean nothing to me if I just look at a number on a page. So I was trying to determine how to best address or give us some idea of what we're looking at when we're talking about a nighttime noise level, which is currently in our ordinance, a forty-nine DBA. What does that mean? I mean, I mean, if we're just in layman's terms. And if you look on the chart here that, and you can find any number of these charts online, this one appeared to be helpful because it not only looked at noise levels, but also looked at potential effects on hearing damage that can occur if you have prolonged exposures to some of these sound levels. So if you look at the top there, you'll see some of the, you know, what we're talking about when we're looking at noise levels. And so, you know, if you're looking at forty-nine DBAs, and that's decibels levels, that's, but something between an average home noise and normal conversation background music. Nighttime noise level, fifty-six DBAs. So again, following that spectrum, but more leaning towards the, the higher end as more moderate type noise level that they're measuring there. And then noise levels for non-residential property that's being proposed is seventy DBAs. And if you see there, that's being compared to office noise, inside car, sixty miles, sixty miles per hour. So again, as I mentioned, you know, except for the non-residential property noise level, the noise level, or the noise levels that are currently in the proposed amendments are the same that we currently have in one eighteen. I didn't make any changes to those. Where those numbers came from, I can't answer. I don't know how they were selected. So that's one of the things, as we get to the end of this presentation, we talk, discuss these matters that I would like to present to you to get some feedback on as to what you think as far as appropriate decibel levels. If you want to stick with these numbers, if you want to tweak those in any way, get that information back so we can present it if we would like to go forward with any time, type of implementation. Okay, so before I go to the next part of the presentations, is there any questions about the proposed amendments or addition to, with section thirty-four dash one five eight?
Let me ask you a question, Jerry.
Sure.
Okay. Say if, if, just hypothetically, if, if we had a concert area in the park back here.
Yes.
Okay. Would that be considered in this ordinance?
We'll get to that in just a second. But there are going to be, what we're proposing as part of this amendment is to add a, a sound equipment permitting process that would allow someone, that they know that they're going to exceed the decibel levels for something like a concert or something like that, that they can apply for a permit at that point, get in, kind of get an exception to the rule, so to speak, and then they wouldn't be in violation of the ordinance.
Okay, one other thing, and I'm probably ahead of myself too. Okay, what about cars?
Okay, the, if you look under section thirty-four, one five two, the violations. So we currently have regulations in our ordinances related to offensive sound that's produced by vehicles.
Okay.
So that, the only thing that's changing with that is that sound equipment within a vehicle, I moved that up into that section because it's, it has to do with a vehicle. And rather than have it separated out, it just made more sense to put it up in that section, in my mind, anyway.
Little bit of question.
Sure.
So what, what, what was section one eighteen, five oh four under? Where was that, where was this whole thing located?
So it's under section, I mean, chapter seven, I think. Go back to mine.
That's okay, I was just curious what it was related to, the whole.
Yeah, Article seven, Performance Standards of our, of chapter one eighteen. So, and there, you know, it may be something we need to discuss. We've had conversations, Mike and I have looked at this, and there's other similar type regulations related to glare and those kind of things that we may consider moving all into, under the nuisance section of the code. Just made, made more sense, but we're kind of looking at that to see if that, we might move that entire article out. There may be some that need to stay, but that's just being discussed at this point.
And my only other question is, I know we've had complaints, and I know at times, so that may be later on down the line when we're talking about these levels. If, if this will settle the, or provide the ability to go ahead and stop some of the noises that have been really problematic. I know over on Main Street, and one of my favorite intersections, Main and University, with that lovely corner, but right near there, there's, there's been lots of noise coming from that, and I know we've had difficulty enforcing that, so.
Sure, well, let me. Chief Weems, would y'all like to address that question in particular?
What was the question again?
Well, I'm just, I'm wondering if these, if this ordinance and the changes in the ordinances will help enforcement of problematic noises that, I know we've, you've been called out several times at different times for noise at that particular location. And there may be a few other locations where you've had a lot of noise, and so.
As far as being called out for vehicle noises?
Well, and, and noises from crowds gathering late at night, and, you know, just.
This would more than likely help, it just, we're, we're discussing right now any electronic equipment that might be associated with the noise. Car stereos, the bullhorns, the, but I know what you're talking about. Usually they turn their car stereos up loud, and yes, this will give us some teeth to do that, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah.
Where they park on the side of the Main Street, crank their cars up.
Have a big party?
Yes. This will give us some teeth.
Okay, thanks.
Wouldn't you agree?
What about frat houses that are in residential sections of town?
Well, if it's a residential section, those, those decibel levels would be, would apply. So I think one of the difficulties right now in discussions with Chief Kennedy in particular is that I think a lot of our officers don't even know that this section one eighteen isn't even in our code. And there already is a decibel level reading requirement for these type of areas because it's located in zoning. And that's one of the reasons we want to move it over to chapter thirty-four, is to make that clear and make it not confusing. It's also got some inconsistent languages, I've already pointed out, with the nighttime, daytime time periods. So just to answer your question, yeah, I mean, those, those requirements would apply to any residential area. You know, if a frat house or sorority is located in a residential area, that, those, those decibel levels are going to apply to those areas too. Okay? Any other questions about the changes to one fifty-eight, or addition of one fifty-eight with those changes?
I also love the provision that if you can hear it thirty feet away, that, that makes sense. Because I, I know when I, several years ago, I saw correspondence about, was it this decibel, or was it this decibel? Or was it, I mean, and y'all don't, our police shouldn't have to be sound engineers, you know?
And there, you know, as with any technology, there's going to be times where things break down, you know? And what this does is doesn't, you know, it doesn't prevent us from making enforcement action if necessary. So there's an opportunity there, you know? Hopefully we'll have, you know, it's, it's going to be some expense. We don't have, even though we have these levels already in section one eighteen, I don't think we have any decibel meters currently that's accessible for our officers to use. And so that's going to require some, you know, funding to, to acquire those. And, you know, we'll need to discuss, I guess, how much and how mu, how many of those we need. But at the end of the day, like I said, you know, with any kind of technology, sometimes they work, sometimes they don't, and you just don't want to be paralyzed and unable to act if you don't have that option. And what this, what that kind of exception gives you is the opportunity to potentially, you know, if, if it does meet those requirements, if it's plainly audible within a building thirty feet away, then that's a violation, is what we're saying.
Yeah, because if you don't have any way of measuring it, it won't hold up in no court if you want to push this issue.
Sure, I mean, and that's, and that's one good thing about, you know, having the decibel levels is, you know, we discussed in our, our meetings with the chiefs, you know, just, you know, I can tell you from a prosecution standpoint, you know, anytime you have an objective readable thing, like if I'm doing a speeding case, for example, if I have, you know, this, you know, a radar measurement on the screen, it's a lot easier to prosecute than just an observation. And so, you know, that's one good thing about having something that's objective, that's measurable, that, and, and, you know, maybe occasion where you have a neighbor who's sensitive or just doesn't like their neighbor. And so they're, they're making complaints that may not be founded, and it, it does protect our officers at that point because they can show them, look, I'm, I'm measuring it right here, it doesn't, it doesn't exceed the decibel levels, there's no violation. And, and that gives them, it's, you know, takes away that subjective argument at that point from them.
I looked a moment ago, you can get an app for your phone.
Oh, for these kind of measurements?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we probably need just, you know, to be a little bit more technical and sophisticated and make sure we're recording the correct. I would just recommend we get something that's dedicated for this with, and we want to make sure that we can, you know, guard against any kind of undue influence, whether it's, you know, kind of wind that may influence the measurement. So what's been recommended is, as I've seen in my research and what we put in the proposed amendment, is to have a wind guard on that microphone, so to make sure that that doesn't give a false reading. Because we, we don't want to, you know, charge somebody who, you know, is not in violation, really.
Well, the one thing, and I'm glad you hit on that, because y'all have to make sure even your radar guns, everything are calibrated. So I do think, I realize there's more expense, but it would cost you more to take things over time and then have them kicked back by the court because you don't have something that has been, I guess, regularly kept up to date on its calibration.
Yep.
And also the specs that you revealed out here.
So, yeah, on the section thirty-four, one five eight B, it spells, spells out the specifications for the type of equipment we're talking about there. It has to, you know, type one or type two calibrated sound meter level, level meter utilizing an A-weighted seals. And the slow meter response is specified by, I'm not going to read all that out, but, and.
That spells expensive.
Well, no, we've, we've kind of looked at those, they're not, they're not as expensive as you might think, just reading that.
Forty-six dollars on Amazon, I did all my work.
Okay, there you go.
It won't hold up in court.
Plus free shipping.
But at the end of the day, we just want to make sure we have an accurate reading, you know? And I think that whatever we can do to ensure that, it's not only going to garner trust for our public, but also it's, you know, help us in any type of enforcement action, including all the way through prosecution, if needed.
Now, now, all of this measurement doesn't preclude an officer driving by and noticing he's thirty feet away, and you can hear the sound, and if he doesn't, he or she doesn't have the tool with them, they can still.
Right, and that's what that, that section D of that, that provision allows for. You know, we, we would like to have the objective reading, but sometimes, you know, like I said, things break down sometimes, and, or they're not accessible. And again, we don't want to not be able to enforce that if, if we need to. Okay, any other questions about one fifty-eight addition? I'll move on to one fifty-nine, because it's kind of a, a related but different topic, okay? So the proposed amendment also adds a section thirty-four, one five nine, which creates a permit requirement for the use of sound equipment in certain occasions and places. And just to summarize what these additions are, so a permit would be required for the use of sound equipment that exceeds the decibel levels that we, that we just saw in thirty-four, one five eight, for special events. And I think we probably already mentioned that when we brought the special event permitting process to you a month or two back. But it was kind of pointing forward to what we're talking about today. But, and then for any type of sound equipment used on city-owned property. The decibel level under that permit could not exceed eighty-five decibels, and I'll get to that, I want to emphasize that just a minute. So put a pin on that, we'll come back to it in just a minute. And the permit has time period valid between hours of eight AM and ten PM. It would requirement, acquire the payment of a permit fee. The application would be filed with the chief police, which would include, among other things, the identification of the sound equipment proposed to be used, the location of where that proposed use would take place, and the, the time and date of the proposed use. What we added to the one fifty-nine, let's see, I think, under, if you look at B for, it allows the city manager some discretion for, to alternate whether we're talking about the decibel level maximum or the time periods that would be ordinarily limited to for certain occasions. So someone, let's say, for example, someone wants to put an outdoor concert on. They know that they're going to go into past midnight or something like that. And if it's an outdoor concert, there's the high probability that it would exceed eighty-five decibels. So part of their application could include a request to the city manager to exceed those, that time period's restriction and those decibel levels. And, and the city manager would have discretion to grant that or not. The addition adds a deadline for the chief police to approve the application, which is fifteen business days. This was added after our, our meeting. I did some research after our meeting and ran across a case, I think out of North Carolina. But anyway, the court in that case, it was a federal court, overturned the ordinance in that case because basically it gave the chief police the ability to deny an application without acting. And so because there was no time period for him to act by, the court effectively says, you're giving the, the chief police too much authority here, and he can deny it. If he doesn't want to act on it, he doesn't have to, and just let it sit there until the, past the, the date that that person or applicant wanted to use it. And so we went back and added a deadline of fifteen business days. Last parts of that are the permit would not be transferable to someone else. So if someone made an application, they could not just give their permit to someone else to use. And also it outlines the basis for a suspension or revocation of the permit. And it also provides for an appeal process, similar to what we had, as you may recall, when we were talking about the special events and short-term rentals. There's an appeal process for any kind of revocation or denial of their permit, that they can appeal that process. uh revocation or denial of their permit, um that they can appeal that process to the city manager.
What about a restaurant or a bar that has music every weekend? Do they have to get a permit?
If they're going to exceed the decimal levels, that's what's being proposed, and that's something we can discuss if we wanna, I know there are certain cities, Austin in particular, who have certain districts or areas that they um have a more of kind of a permanent tight permitted uh process for those kind of restaurant areas, um Sixth Street, those kind of areas, that you're gonna always have someone, you know, playing music or whatever it may be um for periods of times upwards, you know, you know, past certain hours. And so um that's one thing we we can discuss um as we get to the discussion part, is whether or not we want to create something like that for a uh kind of a central business district, if we want to uh just have a more permanent uh permit granted for uh restaurant or something like that, that that knows that they're gonna need that for a long period of time, maybe it, maybe for the the duration of their operation. They they have their planning on having music every night or something like that. So that that's something we should look at and discuss, and um if if we're gonna have more than just a, you know, a one-time use, is there a different fee arrangement we wanna look at at that point? Um, but that's, and the good thing about having a workshop, we get to discuss those things, so. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, as I mentioned, why eighty-five uh as the maximum? Uh if you look under the Texas Penal Code, section forty-two oh one, a person commits an offense if he intentionally or knowingly makes an unreasonable noise, and that is defined in that uh that provision as a noise presumed to be unreasonable if the noise exceeds a decimal level eighty-five. Also, eighty-five decimals is where OSHA begins to require employers to implement a hearing conservation program. So because of those two reasons, I thought eighty-five was a good max rate or or decimal level when we're talking about issuing a permit to someone. And as I mentioned, you know, if they know that they're going to exceed that for, you know, like an outdoor concert or something like that, they can, as part of that application, apply for an exception to that. But I think for the general general rule, you know, if you're exceeding a a decimal level that's uh would be, you know, prosecuted under as disorderly conduct or would violate OSHA, then it's probably a good decimal level to kind of max that out at. Okay? Okay, so any questions about, I guess first on any, the addition of uh one fifty-nine and the permitting process that's outlined there?
I do have one little question. Um, I know in some of the concerts and some of the gatherings, I think people had brought their own um sound equipment to um convince other people to act in a different way or vote in a different way. I can't even remember what it was. But um could they get a permit even at the, or could we deny them having a permit at the concert? Or is that a free speech kind of thing or?
And it may depend on whether, where they wanna locate that equipment um as part of that, you know, application. We wanna know where that's gonna be used at. And um, you know, we've discussed uh when I met with the the chiefs, uh we we discussed, you know, you know, if we're talking about something like the Blueberry Festival or something like that, um do we want to have, we well, generally speaking, we wanna know where people are gonna be using sound equipment anyway, because, you know, we only have so many electrical outlets and the ability to, and we don't want, you know, sound equipment kinda interfering with one another. So I think, you know, for the most part, the Blueberry Festival does a good job of, you know, placing things or, you know, stages at different parts of the whether they're talking about Festival Park or up here on Main Street. But, you know, we've had occasions where people have used, you know, other sound equipment to disrupt people. Um, and we've discussed, you know, having, you know, a certain area where if somebody were were to apply and they wanted to exercise their First Amendment right to, you know, express, you know, their freedom of religion, whatever it may be, that there's a certain area that they could be located, just like, you know, any other vendor would be uh in a in a special, and they would be able to exercise that right at that at that location. And uh, you know, if they, as long as they did so, and they uh, you know, made the proper application, paid the fee, um, you know, maintained their location there at that festival, I don't I don't see a a way to further
Inhibit?
Inhibit that, but uh, you know, I think so long as they're in those guidelines, I think that's that's better than what we've seen right now or what the ability we have to at least uh enforce um violations at this point.
Okay.
Is this helping you guys or or adding just more work for you?
It helps us tremendously.
Okay, so it's what you would like?
Disrupting, just like he said. So the suggestion was we have areas to put them, just like the other people that buy permits. They stay there, they don't, they're not able to encroach on other people's paid-for permit slot. So when you put them in their slot, other people, if they don't wanna hear it, they can walk away.
Okay.
And there's no, uh, they don't have the ability to follow them around like they have in the past, so there's more than one way to skin a cat.
And then also, if we, let's say SFA does do a dedicated facility, sports facility of some type that could be flexed for concerts or something, then you'd have controlled access to it too. So then that also helps part of that argument that, you know, yes, they could set up somewhere, not inside there.
Right, okay, great.
And I'll point out uh one of the recommended changes we're making on, if you look under section thirty-four one five seven, it lists some affirmative defenses. You know, when we're talking about stadiums, we're talking about festivals, parades, those kind of things. The language as it currently says, uh a person at a stadium or sports event, a person at a parade, festival, or street event. As it could be argued that that person is, can cite that affirmative defense because they are a person located at those events and they're using, you know, engaging in what would ordinarily be in a prohibited conduct. What we're proposed changing is that we take out that person and just focus on the event itself. So that noise created by a parade, that's not a violation. Well, that would, that would, I think that's more the intent of what we were trying to, when this ordinance was originally passed, is that the noise from a stadium during a a, you know, a lawful football game, for example, when, you know, SFA's playing on Saturday morning, that you know, there there's noise created. What we don't want is someone just to show up at that stadium and, um, you know, use equipment or engage in um what would otherwise be prohibited activity under the, under this ordinance, but then try to rely on this affirmative defense, saying, I'm a person at this stadium and I I therefore can rely on this affirmative defense. Does that make sense? Okay, um and so that's, we're trying to tweak that language there, and that was what I was on your note there, I'll just jump ahead again. And of course, adding another affirmative defense there for anyone who is exercising their right to use a permit and, you know, have properly gone through the application process and been approved, that would be an affirmative defense that we're adding um to that list.
So, so I finally remembered exactly the situation that I had. It it was our Lady of Guadalupe Festival and they, of course, have uh music and um and sound, and there was somebody who wanted to disrupt it and uh preach something else and with a loudspeaker. So this would, I'm sure they got a permit or they would get a permit, but the other person did not, or would this help with that situation?
Correct. Well, I think the the hope is that, you know, the organizer of the event, uh whether we're talking about Blueberry or this is, this would, you know, as part of that, as you recall, we had that application processes, you know, if you're applying for a special event permit, and one of the things we wanted to do was, you know, require a uh that if you're gonna use sound equipment, identify where that's gonna be and get a permit. So we know where where the sound equipment's gonna be used and that that's been permitted. And if someone were to just show up without a permit, now that's a violation. Now, if they did, you know, know the event's coming up, they wanna apply for their own separate permit, that's what the situation that Chief Williams was talking about, where we have an area where they can go to and they could preach their message that they wanna preach, as they're allowed to do in the First Amendment, but they have to do it right there. Uh, and the people, the event goers can avoid them if they so choose, or they can stand there and listen to them if they so choose.
Okay, that makes, that good. I think we solved it by having the drummer stand next to him.
That works too. Okay, any other questions about the addition of one five nine in the permitting process?
Are there fines and uh and do they increase with multiple uh?
But the um, the the fine would be, as with any kind of violation of the ordinance, you're gonna have a the fine, and that's cited under, it's already in the section thirty-four, under thirty-four one five three. So you have that penalty that refers back to our general uh ordinance violation penalty.
Thanks.
The, okay, one thing I wanted to discuss is the fee. Um, you know, I mentioned that it's part of the application for the permit, there would be a fee required. We need to discuss an amount um that we could put under our master fee schedule that you approved at this last meeting. If if, you know, if these changes are made and the permitting process approved, uh what amounts um would be required? And if we wanna have any exceptions to that, for example, I've cited, you know, as part of uh the special events application, we want to know where the sound equipment is, so we wanna require a permit. Do we want to incorporate um this permit fee into that? Do we wanna waive the fee uh as part of that application, uh since they're applying for a special event permit? Are there other exceptions that we wanna look at, um possibly waiving a fee? Those are the kind of things that I think we need to discuss and and get some direction from the council as far as what you're looking at, as far as um any type of fee uh requirement.
What's normal?
It it varies from anything from just twenty-five dollars up, I've seen, you know, a couple hundred dollars, you know, I mean, it just kinda depends on the city that you're looking at. Of course, the bigger cities, probably uh higher the the uh the fee is. I mean, but, you know, as with any fee, the primary purpose is to, you know, offset any kind of cost that would be associated with, you know, the application process, the man hours it would take to process that. It's not any type of revenue-producing um thing, it's just really to offset those costs. That's what we should be focusing on.
We already have a fee structure under the facility rental one, uh right, that we just discussed.
And luckily Jessica's here, so.
I mean, I, to me, if we are, we, I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but we tackled that issue, you know, nonprofits and all that. I mean, would it be logical to just follow that same set of guidelines or, I don't know?
I would suggest that we did that, and I mean, we would be uniform in doing so. And uh, we wouldn't have anybody complaining concerning it, but we gonna have complaints, whether you make it five dollars or or twenty-five dollars, so. You 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 you're not gonna be able to please the public regardless.
Okay. So, in those other fee discussions, didn't we give the city manager the authority to waive those? That was true. On the uh, was that the special event?
He's waiving already.
Special event permitting process. We gave the 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 city manager the ability to waive that fee, uh for whatever reason, you know, we were looking at examples in that scenario of, you know, a sponsor that paid for a substantial amount or donated a substantial amount back to the city, that was a, you know, give the the city manager the ability to do that.
Be be careful, I like I like me some loud music sometimes. Y'all probably know that.
So, I mean, those could be um some reasons, and we could, you know, just leave that to the city manager's discretion if you would like, similar to what we did in the uh the special event permitting uh ordinance.
Family has a family reunion at their house and hires a band or something, does that require a permit?
Only if they're going to exceed the decimal levels.
How will they know? I mean, if they have a wedding at their, people here have parties at their house.
Couldn't download.
He found it.
Yeah, we got the-
I mean- No, but I mean, if you if you think uh you're going to potentially violate that, I would exercise caution and, you know, and uh especially if it's gonna be outdoors, you know. You know, and uh, and we don't wanna ma-, as I mentioned, the purpose of the fee is not to re-, you know, generate revenue for the city. It's to just offset those costs. So we don't wanna put anything that would be onerous on somebody like that who is applying, you know, just because they wanna put a, have a, you know, a family get-together or something like that in their backyard. But um, so, you know, and and you know, if, you know, if it's a a nonprofit or something like that, you know, I think the city city manager could take that into account as he considers whether or not to waive the fee.
Thank you, Blaine. Your positive energy helps me.
Yeah, it got it got your answer right there. But the police would take care of it if if we didn't get the festival.
They're smiling too, so that's good.
If they get a call about a banjo and a family gathering, I'm just saying, there's an app for that.
Jessica, I hate to put you on the spot, but do you remember what that fee structure was?
Um, for like an alcohol permit, which is one of those administrative things, it was fifty dollars.
Okay.
That's what I was thinking for a fee.
Okay, is that-
That's exactly what I'm-
Sound button. And as with anything, you know, we'll talk about the decimal levels in just a minute, but, you know, if we determine that, hey, this is costing us more, then fifty dollars is really covering, you know, as far as administrative costs and those kind of things, we may need to come back to that and tweak that. But I think that's probably a good starting spot, and then, as I mentioned, you know, if there may be occasions where the city manager can waive that. Um, and I'll add that language, uh similar to what we had in the uh the special event, okay? Any other questions about fees or comments or anything? Okay, so as I mentioned, um, the decimal levels that are in the amendment are really not different than what we currently have in in section one eighteen, especially when we're talking about residential areas. I don't know where those numbers came from. I don't know why they were selected. They're kind of odd numbers if you look at them. Um, so forty, was it? Forty-nine and fifty-six, you know, I would've picked an even number or rounded it up or something, but uh somebody chose those uh for 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 reasons that I don't know about. My suggestion, um, and, you know, I'll I'll turn this over to Chief Kennedy or Chief Queens or whoever wants to discuss this, but my my suggestion is that since these are our current numbers, that we determine if they are you know, and they're right now, they're not being enforced as far as I'm aware, determine if they're valid. I mean, and that will take, you know, going out, taking measurements and seeing if it's, see if it's gonna reach those levels, would it be a potential violation? Uh, and if we need to tweak that in the future, come back in the future and and make recommended recommended changes. But I have no reason to suggest to you that we need to tweak the numbers right now. I don't have any independent basis to show you that, hey, we should go to fifty-five decimals versus forty-nine, or sixty decimals versus fifty-six. There's, I don't have any studies, I don't have any anything to suggest that what we currently have on the books is wrong.
But the other ordinances had different decimal, did they have a uniform decimal level? Was it eighty-five? Is that what you were suggesting?
No, well-
Other ordinances you looked at?
They they varied depending on the cities. Um, and uh, some cities had higher, um, you know, like Austin, probably a bit higher uh than others. Ours was not out of whack or any- Probably a bit higher, uh, than others, um, ours was not out of whack or anything that I could tell. Uh, I just don't know exactly where those numbers were derived from. You know, maybe an independent study was performed and that's how they came about that, but I just don't have any knowledge and I'm not aware of anybody in the staff. That knows, um, where those numbers came from.
I think, I think that we would, it might almost be another kind of goal, separate workshop discussion on. What the goals are in terms of why you would set, or maybe have certain areas where decibels might vary. You know, I could think of being in Kima and Galveston and even League City when at different times, unfortunately, while I was there, I think in Leander. I think every city I've been at has went through that exercise where you're trying to determine, do you want to have. Certain type of establishments operating a certain way in certain parts of town or not? Or does it become, you know, think about what it would be like if it's every night and if it was downtown. Versus, let's say when the Fredonia has, you know, music on the patio. Or maybe if we did have a place downtown, maybe it's not all the time that it's amplified. Uh, we had some places in Kima that, I mean, it was a party every night and it was amplified and you had people living. Literally behind bars, uh, in single-family homes, so, and then you get to, in Austin, you get to. So I think, I think our scale and the fact we do have places that have music on a fairly regular basis, but they're either enclosed. Or it might be a more limited basis when they're amplified up to a certain time, except when we have concerts. And so, you know, I don't think the concert thing would be, if you're talking about, even if it was half a dozen times a year we had outdoor concerts, that's. That's manageable, even if they were kind of loud. But it's when you get into, is this something like every week, week in, week out? And is it kind of disturbing people in their daily lives, that's then that we would need to probably discuss. Where would y'all really want to have that, was that somewhere on north, is that somewhere else, is that downtown? Or is that kind of not create the environment that y'all are shooting for? Or in the future, did we even want to look at with, uh. You know, if you're incentivizing certain type of establishments to come, you know, do you want them to kind of purpose build or incentivize them to build something? You know, indoors or indoor-y, maybe they can lift up kind of like Ice House, uh, type doors or something part of the year. I was gonna say, I mean, if there, and so you could have some things and maybe part of the year you can do it up to a certain time. Or maybe at a certain time you bring down the doors. I have seen, you're gonna laugh and I'm not joking, and I think it was when I first got to Leander. I was staying at a hotel in, uh, the adjacent city, I won't say which one, that had a nice Hyatt Place. And there was a concert venue right behind it, and I'm not joking, Snoop Dogg played. I thought I heard stuff and I'd been, you know, go back and it, and it went on, it was loud. But you had a concert venue literally right next to one of their nicer hotels. I've seen it in other cities where you'd be surprised, you'll have a very nice hotel. And then you might have bars and restaurants, Galveston had a lot of that same issue on Strand. And then, so it becomes this kind of balance, you know, do you want to have your, your nice hotel right next where people are trying to sleep? With music that goes till, you know, two in the morning, no, you probably don't. So sometimes these are good problems to have to be able to choose too, as you grow. But I've seen where everything is abutting each other, uh, in a small area, you know. Kima was two square miles, with, you know, many weekends, thirty, forty thousand people come to town for a town of thirty thousand, sometimes fifty, sixty, eighty. Depending on what it is. So I think that's almost a different workshop, but amplification becomes an issue too. And I think that, that would be, once you get to the amplification versus if it's kind of acoustic night. On kind of a semi-outdoor venue, that's one thing. Once you go to amplification, then you're talking about how far does that carry, is it a winter night? Is it a clear night, things like that will also affect kind of how far that goes.
But ha- have you had complaints? Have you had complaints from the?
Uh, no, sporadically, but, but what they do have is they have an outdoor DJ on some nights, on weekends. And then they have a live van on others, and that live van is located right in the very corner, the northwest corner. And it's trying to go, it's pushing the music back towards Lanana, Walker Avenue and, and other places. So, we're residential places, so this problem he just spoke of is what we already have right now. So we probably need to address that before we move forward in a workshop. Because if we have these lower numbers here and we go with the eighty-five, they're gonna have a defense to prosecution when they come up with these numbers. So, does that make sense? We still got a lot of work to do. Based on that fact.
Well, to me, um, I'd rather hear from you all based on the complaints and on the, you know, a proposal rather than us. Uh, rather than me, I don't know how the rest of you feel, but pulling a number out of the hat. And, and suggesting areas that it might, where it might be different and.
Right, and so some of these, these three numbers came out of the zoning portion of it, right?
The residential.
Right, okay, and so we're butted up right next to a residential area. The one I'm talking about, Fredonia Brewery, and I don't know what the Mad Hatters are gonna do. I don't know if they're gonna have an outdoor venue or not, but, but, uh, another reason we need to address this. So, looking at this, after you started explaining it with the zoning numbers. And then we have the eighty-five decibels, then that's, sometimes will put us in con- conflict when we go to court with them. When we have something already in there with the lower numbers out of the zoning.
And that, that eighty-five would only apply first of all in the law.
Right, right, so.
See, the, the problem is, is, is you got, let's see, one, two, three, four. Four sets of old ears, we don't know what eighty-five is. Now, he may know what eighty-five is, I don't know what eighty-five decibel is.
I'm sorry. What did you say, I couldn't hear you?
He said you need to hear an eight.
Just want to be clear that he said that, not me.
Well, he feels old to me, so.
So if you look at the chart here in front of you, so if you're looking at eighty-five, and as I mentioned, that's where it gets har- starts to get harmful. You know, if you look at the bottom, and this is really more for prolonged exposure, but that's where, when they're, they're getting the red, that's severe. Um, and, uh, that's why OSHA, um, starts regulating at that, that decibel level. Um, and so, um, uh, any, any, you know, as part of any type of regulations related to noises. I mean, there's, uh, or the re- one of the reasons, of course, is that, you know, there's been a recognition that, you know. We want to protect our, our residents from exposure to, uh, potentially damaging, um, noises. And, uh, not only that, but also nuisance, uh, and, and. And so there, the, the courts have recognized, uh, you know, a legitimate governmental interest in protecting. Uh, the residents from these, uh, nuisances as well as potential, you know, hearing loss. Um, and so, um, these are the types of things that we should rely upon as we are implementing something like this. Uh, requirement, because, you know, anytime of challenge, you know, one of the questions that's going to be asked is, what's the governmental interest here? Why are you implementing this requirement? And I think that we need to be clear on that, that we are, you know, we want to protect our citizens not only from, you know, potential. Hearing loss, but also, you know, there's, there's, I mean, there's a recognizable interest in, uh, protecting them from nuisance.
A question I had, uh, and I don't, I think that's something we're all struggling around here is, this is a, a dB scale. And what the ordinance says is DBA, and those are not the exact same scales. So, I think having, being able to inform us better on what each of those things means. Because that's what's in the ordinance, and that's what we will update when we move it to chapter thirty-four. Is what are those guidelines and what does it really mean to be eighty-five DBA? And, and that, my understanding, and I, I'm not an expert at this, but my understanding is that. That scale is based on frequencies also, and so a lower frequency might bolster. The, the decibel level, whereas a higher frequency, it might not take as much to be as powerful in amplitude. And I, I don't. Am I close on that?
That's right, the chart he took out reflects what you're talking about, as the, the.
The chart he took out references exactly what you're talking about, it goes octave band, and the higher the octave band, the lower the decibel where it becomes offensive. But there's absolutely no way for us to enforce that mechanism. I can give you a reference for eighty-five decibels, uh, when we started in the late nineties, we used a decibel meter for noise violations. We didn't have the city ordinance to enforce, so for those of you who've been around a little bit, some examples of that. When Sigma Chi was in the fraternity house here on top of Douglas Hill on West Main, I stood at the back fence of their property and they had a full DJ setup with stacks. And I could not get an eighty-five decibel reading at the fence, it was not, it could not hit that level. When Big Boz was on Park Street, when they had the crawfish place on Park Street, we got a lot of noise complaints because they would have very large live bands. We could stand on their property line and could not get an eighty-five decibel reading. So at the speaker, you're gonna be at about one-twenty, uh, decibels at the speaker. The further you get away, it drops dramatically over airspace, so that's just a general reference as to what eighty-five looks like.
And I know that that's, that the decibel scale is logarithmic, so I know that it's, it's gonna peak there. I just, the more we can, we can be informed and we can inform residents of what this really means. Well, I think will help us make better decisions about it.
Yeah, and I think what our brief conversation there was, to give you a better reference of decibel levels, if we could get a decibel meter and go to these parties and these. Concerts and go stand at the brewery at the property lines and go, okay, this is what we're getting consistently. We'll have a reference point to go, we know that Fredonia Brewery is generally gonna produce this decibel level if they have somebody standing out there playing live music. A fraternity party is generally gonna produce this kind of a decibel level.
And, and I think with that, if we got some decent readings, then, I think then the question is. Could you then look at your time limitations, what's a reasonable hour to, so you, everyone can coexist to? And you don't set it where basically you're setting some of those establishments up to fail. That they're gonna have an issue, if anything, it's probably the other way, because we want them to do well. And everybody gets sleep at the right time, I guess, but I will say that I did thought, I did think at, at that stay at that hotel. That it was really good Snoop Dogg karaoke, and the next day I found it was really him.
Okay, Jerry, have we answered all your questions?
No, we, we've already discussed the affirmative offenses, um, but, uh, any other question, just general questions for me? You know, we have, you know. Chief Williams, Chief Kennedy, Chief Arvela here, Mike News here.
I did have one other concern, to me, there's a, it's a very, very different thing to have areas in town that have businesses that normally produce music. Than to have, like, for example, a fraternity house in the middle of a neighborhood, having been fifty-two months pregnant with that Sigma Chi house. You know, down the street from me, you know, that's a whole different ballgame. I didn't know how to shoot a gun at the time, but. But, um, anyway, I think looking at these areas of town and maybe having something different. And, and the areas that are normally supposed to produce music and that we want to produce music is a whole different than, right, right within a residential neighborhood.
I know there's been talk that there's an arts district here, is there an entertainment district here, or is that just something people talk about? Doesn't exist, okay.
And, and I, I do think that, obviously, that, that's kind of what I'm referring to also. I think that we do have a character that is a little different, you can find some cities and, and, you know, you don't, do you want, you don't really want your city, I don't believe that. You don't want downtown to just be a series of, of sports bars at night, that, that you may want some of them, let's, let's say the fire station. Let's say you've got games and concerts and things, but I have seen where you end up with a cadence of them. And you get a half a dozen of them, and eventually other people don't want to go downtown. It's one thing to have, you know, one place or even a classy place, or I've seen kind of pub-type restaurants. That'll, they'll have some stuff too, and, um, but I do think that that is kind of where y'all need to think about being deliberate. I do think you can ca- kind of have all of the above as long as it's balanced, I think that's the key.
Any other questions?
Have we answered your question?
I think so.
Okay, good, okay, all right, any other question?
Thank you.
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes this, doesn't it? Okay, that includes the workshop, we'll, uh, take a break until five-thirty and then we'll go to the regular session. Thank you very much.